We're going to do is actually have the press ask a series of questions of the folks that are running and we'll take the very short answers as they've all agreed they'd like to give and we'll be able to get more impact there, hopefully take some questions from the audience and be able to make this a real, real interactive type of format where we get to really know the folks that are running for our offices this year. So I'd like to first introduce the members of the press here. We have April Gilmett, who's from the New Hampshire, whatever it is, union leader. Chris Caesar, who's from the Londonderry Times, and Mel McIntyre, who's from LondonderryNH.net. And they're each going to ask several questions. We'll just go into format right down the line and don't be nervous. This is your chance to show what you can do in a very relaxed atmosphere. That's what we're doing. So let's start it off, okay? First, April, why don't you ask our first question to John Robinson. Actually, before we start, let me introduce the folks who are running. John Robinson, who is already on the school board, Todd Jankus, Nancy Hendricks, and Glenn Douglas. Now, maybe before we start with the questions, let's just give you guys about a half a minute or so to just tell us a little bit about yourselves. And we'll start with you, John.
Hi, I'm John Robinson. I've been on the school board for three years. Before that, I was a member of the budget committee for a year and I spent a long weekend in the state legislature filling out an unexpired term. And I am here simply asking for a second term to try to continue the job that we've been doing over the past three years.
Okay, thank you, John. And Todd?
Yes, hi, I'm Todd Jankus. Currently, the vice chair for the town budget committee. My background, I have MBA and two undergraduate degrees. I've been a budget committee member for the past two budget seasons. I have a longstanding career of about 20 years in high tech on an international basis. And I believe that the education of our children as a community is a fundamental key to our future success, but I believe doing so requires a well-balanced, fiscally responsible approach. And that's basically all I have to say at this point.
In a nutshell, okay, thank you. Nancy?
Hi, thank you for having us here today. My name is Nancy Hendricks. I live at 14 King John with my husband and my 10-year-old son. I moved to Londonderry in 2006 almost exclusively for the quality of our wonderful schools. I'm running for the school board because I'm passionate about kids, I'm passionate about education, and I want to be part of our district governing as we move forward.
Thank you, Nancy. And Glenn?
My name is Glenn Douglas. I've been a resident since 1996. I've followed things in town for quite a while. I run a little website, TownUpdate.com. I've worked in high-tech my entire career, I guess, and I've seen a lot of what other countries do for education and the value of education and what is and isn't needed in education. I've decided that after several years of watching, I'll actually put myself, try to put myself on the other side of the table. That's pretty much it. I have a senior, he's graduating. He just got accepted to St. Anselm. I have a junior, she's going to go somewhere, I think. And I have a second grader. And just to put everything out there, my wife is a teacher's aide at South School and has been for about 12 years.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Now, let's start with the questions. April, would you like to start? And John, why don't you take it first?
All right, my first question is, in your opinion, is the 500-member deliberative session quorum still an effective way for the school district to gather input from the overall community?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the premise of the question. I don't think that the quorum prohibits the school district from getting input from the community. I think that the quorum puts a lid or a threshold on the number of people who need to be present at the deliberative session in order to make a motion from the floor. I think that anywhere from one to 500 people coming to a deliberative session have every right to stand up and say what they want. And it's something that we were talking about a little earlier at the other venue. We have public meetings, we have public hearings, we try to get people to attend and speak out, but I think that, and here it comes, I think that getting citizens to come to school board meetings is a lot like getting people to do jury duty, except you don't get out of work. Insert laugh here.
Thank you, John. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. First and foremost, I believe that everyone should be given a chance to speak at any meeting. In fact, not only do I think they should be given a chance, I think that, in fact, I would encourage it strongly. I welcome it. I'm open to it. I'm open to any dialogue that gives us as elected officials the opportunity to, in fact, hear from what the public, in fact, wants. The people who put us here, the taxpayers, the voters, they're the ones that put us here. With that said, and without yet a legal decision by the courts on the legality or constitutionality, I'm generally in favor of the concept of a quorum. And let me explain why. In general, I'd like to have the highest reasonable number of voters practicable attend, participate, and vote at the deliberative sessions. What I'd want to avoid is to have a limited, small number of unelected people making decisions that impact over 17,000 voters. It's one thing for elected officials to make policy, budget decisions. They spent months and months deliberating at open forums that the public's welcome to attend. However, they were voted into office, they took an oath of office. What if you only had 10 people show up at a deliberative session? I'd rather see a large number of people making changes. And if the changes ought to be made, great. That's what democracy's all about. But let's just make certain that, in fact, those changes are made, in my opinion, and that may change with the legal decision, obviously. But at this point in time, my opinion is that you're better off having a large number of people, a good cross-section, a statistically significant sample of the 17,000 voters making dramatic changes, up or down or what have you. It's just my opinion that I'd rather have a larger number of people in democracy making decisions for the people than a smaller number. If those people making policy decisions are ones that have not been elected to office by the voters and they haven't taken an oath of office, it goes to accountability. And one of the reasons why is if, say, for example, a decision was made to, I don't know, increase the budget by $2 million because somebody wanted something special, I don't know, an auditorium, for example, if that decision was able to be made by, say, 10 voters that decide to show up, I don't know, I kind of have a problem with that. However, if it was made by, say, a significant statistical sample of cross-section of voters of those 17,000 people, it's the will of the people. And that's what democracy's all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And Nancy?
Democracy is certainly about the will of the people. And I sat on a school board in another district in New Hampshire, it was actually Jaffrey Ridge, and we had as many challenges getting people to those deliberative sessions as we do here. We did not have a quorum, and I can assure you that without a quorum, a variety of interesting and certainly challenging things can happen, not only to budgets, but bond issues. I recognize that 500, getting 500 people to go anywhere these days is a challenge, but I believe that the quorum is in place for a reason. I believe that the quorum will protect our budget and our bond issues from any group of people that wants to dramatically alter the outcome of either a budget or a bond.
Thank you, Nancy. Glenn?
I'll try to go to the short answer because we got a little heated across the street when we were talking about this.
I'm short.
Yours was short.
I'm short.
As far as effective, bottom line, short answer, I'm going to have to say no. Simple reason, we've never had a quorum of 500 people and there's been very, very little discussion in the years that it's been in effect. Slightly longer answer, when the charter commission on the town side came up this year, there were new issues brought up that I don't believe anyone had any idea that there was a possibility, and I say possibility, that the quorum could be considered illegal. In September, I went to the school board and I said, "I want to know what your Plan B is." Because back then, I was afraid someone would challenge the quorum. At the deliberative, I didn't know a lawsuit would be brought before the quorum, and that's still being dealt with. What I wanted to know back then is what happens if someone stands up and cries foul? And the reason I asked that is I wanted to know what was going to happen to the vote, the budget. Does this thing get locked down by the court system and we can't move forward? Do we get to vote? Do we not get to vote? And I wanted to eliminate a lot of what I'm seeing in town now is a lot of the blogs and the websites and the news articles saying, "What's going on?" There's a huge push this year to get 500 people to the deliberative session. I've asked for years, "Please, please come to town meeting. Please come to the deliberative session." It's all over my website. Please come, please come, please come. I think we're going to get a lot of discussion this year, so it may be very effective. At least people will get to say what they want to say and be heard. And that's what I believe.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, if you'd like to ask the next question, let's start with Todd.
Sure. I was trying to think of questions to ask today, and I asked a couple of my friends what they, you know, what they would ask in my position. And someone brought up to me House Bill 39, which was a bill proposed by Ralph Bohm in Hillsborough. And basically, his argument is that right now, the state defines inadequate education in such a way that it makes a spending mandate of about $10,000 per student, but only provides about $3,500 per student in funding. And his proposal is to redefine the state's definition of inadequate education, to remove things like arts education, world languages, technology education from the state's definition of inadequate education. Do you think that's an appropriate measure or is that kind of an attack on, you know, maybe equitable education in the state?
Well, let me answer that by telling you what I believe in, in this regard. I believe a well-rounded education includes not only the fundamentals of reading, writing, math, science, social studies, and history, but also the arts, athletics, and other means by which to expand and develop the mind, to educate our children to not only be doers and thinkers, but also to become creative, well-balanced leaders and problem solvers in whatever they choose in the future. Because quite frankly, I think that with my experience globally, I've also witnessed a number of what foreign countries do in terms of education for their children. Our children, our future leaders of society in America today are going to be up against some serious stiff competition. I think we need to make sure that, in fact, we educate our children to be able to handle that ever-expanding global marketplace. So I believe that well-rounded education is key, and I'm not sure if that answered your question, but that's my answer.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. Nancy?
I happen to agree. I think that a well-rounded education includes certainly the basics, reading, writing, math, science. But I also believe that an adequate education, from my view, would certainly include technology. It would certainly include world languages. I know that there's a movement in this particular bill to consider world languages not part of an education, given the fact that we are becoming global in just about everything that we do. I think it's very important for students to have the opportunity to learn a foreign language. I would not support a bill that didn't consider the arts to be part of a well-rounded education. I think the kids are going to be challenged in a variety of different ways globally when they get into college, when they get out into the world, when they go to work. And I believe that they have to be prepared. I also think that part of this bill is reducing or eliminating some of the way inadequate education is funded. And I believe that that would fall back onto the burden in the local district. And, you know, we're already challenged locally in our budgets. So that's my perspective about House Bill 39.
Thanks, Nancy. Glenn?
As similar to Todd, as far as working in high-tech, I've seen a lot of people from other countries and the value they put on education. And one of the things that I tell my kids constantly is you need to understand who you're going to compete against. Because there are a lot of people that come from other places that spend a lot of time, and that's their way to get out, in some cases, and move up. Exactly what constitutes an adequate education, that question has been going around Concord for years. I don't know if it'll ever get answered. One of the, I guess, the problems I have with the state saying this is what's required is not every town is different, not every state is different, every city is different. Some towns should teach different things. Some towns may say, "This is what we want." I don't think we can ever go back to the local control and paying for it all locally. But there needs to be, in my opinion, more of a focus on, you know, the three Rs, if you will. Some things you really, really need to spend a lot of time on. And the high-tech with the jobs moving overseas, it's very different. It's a different world. You can't just go out and say, "I'm going to be a lawyer," because there's 7,000 of them now. You can't be a doctor. You're not going to get into manufacturing unless you move to China. My company wanted to send me over there for six months. I chose not to get a passport and stay here. It's a different world and we need to really focus on what you need to get by. And looking outside what other countries are doing is a requirement, though. We'll see if they ever answer it in Concord, because, like I said, it's been around and around.
Thank you, Glenn. And John?
This bill is just another in a line of not very artful attempts to pass down funding responsibilities from the state to the towns. The state has a much larger base to draw on, much more way, much more options in terms of generating revenue. We have property taxes. Now, to the specifics of this, technology, yeah, hey, there's an idea. Let's cut technology education. Does anybody think that China competes with us selling pottery? I mean, they're selling computer chips, they're selling medical devices, they're selling airplanes. Languages, does anybody have the hubris to think that speaking English alone in an international market is satisfactory anymore? If you want to be engaged in a worldwide market, if you want to do business with South Asia, where the most rapidly growing consumer markets are, you need to understand foreign languages. Arts, arts engage students. Arts are the reasons why many students are in the school. Arts are things that help develop intellectual skills, perceptual skills, mathematical skills, all kinds of additional skills. And you want to cut these just because that way you get to say the state doesn't have to give you quite as much money? Come on, there are better ways to do it.
Thank you, John. All right, Mel, your question, and let's start with Nancy.
All right. This year, the school board is presenting a budget that's much lower than last year's. It eliminates 87 people ranging from two-hour aides to senior administrators. Do you believe that this proposed budget went too far or did it go far enough?
Well, did it go too far? I don't believe that it went too far. I've had many long conversations with our superintendent about the reductions in staff and faculty. As you know, a good part of that is relative to our declining enrollment. We've lost 181 students. Our overall population in our district is now down to 4984, I think was the last number the superintendent gave me. So I think that this budget had a lot to do with the fact that our enrollment is declining. Nobody likes to see people lose jobs. My husband lost his job a year and a half ago and was, or almost two years ago, and was out of work for 14 months. So nobody likes to cut people out of budgets, and I understand that. However, the overall goal is certainly to be mindful to our taxpayers while maintaining the level and quality of education that we have in our classrooms. I can tell you, by watching this board and the budget committee and the administrators discuss this budget, it is a painstaking process. It takes hours. It was thoughtfully put together. It was planned, input from community, input from administrators. So did it go too far? I think that it is appropriate at the time, given the changes in our district.
Thank you, Nancy. And Glenn?
It's hard, I think, for any of us, except maybe John, to know what went too far, because the three of us haven't sat in on all of the meetings. I tend to sit in on a lot. I think what we need to look at, though, is unfortunately, the economy. There's lots of things that are different now, and there needs to be a balance between the future and now. As far as how deep do you cut? I personally, and I told my wife, I says, you know, as far as the teacher's aide, and she's an aide, she's one of the ones that will be slated to be cut. I says, you know, "If the aides weren't needed now, why were you needed before?" I don't agree with cutting the aides. I think there should have been other cuts, other places. Those are the people that work the closest with the kids. There's a lot of stuff that goes on in those classrooms. A lot of things have changed since I went to school. In a square room with 30 kids, and it's a different world now. I do think you need to ask questions. We need to look at the future and say, you know, Pinkerton's looking at a decreasing enrollment for 10 years now, they're saying. Pinkerton can pull from Auburn for more revenue, or other towns. Londonderry can't, at least not right now. We need to balance taxpayer and the people that are really hurting out there with what the kids need. Like I said, the kids need to learn to compete globally, because it's hard to compete out there now. It's different than it used to be.
Thank you, Glenn. And John?
First, just to put some numbers to it, the proposed budget for this year is $63,763,100. Last year, it was $63,862,247. So that is a reduction of about $99,000. It's down, but it's not a draconian cut. Todd mentioned he has an MBA, and that's great. I have a master's in marketing and management. One of the things that I recognize, and I'm sure Todd does too, and everybody does, is I'm not an educational expert. We have a staff of educational experts, and when the superintendent and the principals come to you and say, "Hey, of all the things that we might have to cut, this is the one that will have the least impact on direct student services and the excellence of the education provided and our programs going forward," you have to give that a certain degree of credence and weight, and that helps inform the decisions. Do I like to cut people? Of course not. Nobody wants to. Most of the aides that we're cutting and a lot of the teachers that we're cutting are Londonderry residents. The last thing we want to do to try to help our economy is to create more unemployed people. But at the same time, the district exists primarily for the students, and if this is the balance that the administration tells us is the best one to achieve the goals that we need to achieve, and absent any loud cries from the community saying, "No, we don't want this," then I will give them the presumption of the doubt and say, "Let's go forward with this plan and hope that it works out as well as you say it will."
Thank you, John. And Todd?
Thank you. Do I think this cut went too far? No, I do not. And let me caveat that. My wife is probably going to be a casualty as well. She works for the school district as a teacher's aide. So it's, I objectively looked at this, being a member of the budget committee, being a vice chair in the budget committee, going over the numbers, and we did a lot of due diligence. We had a number of meetings and we discussed extensively the bottom-line numbers of various departments, asked a lot of questions and so forth, to John's point. It was the lesser of the evils, if you will, to minimize impact to students. Now, it's arguable that the level of service at the individual level, will it be impacted? Sure, it will. But let me put some numbers around this. I mean, to John's point on the $63 million budget line, in order to get that budget to where it is, because of revenue shortfalls in the state, we had to reduce expenses. And John, you may know the numbers well, but it's 2.7 million had to be cut from the budget just to keep the budget where it is. So, and it still is going to have some impact in terms of, to the tax rate. Did we go too far? I answered the question, no. Other areas that we could have looked at, there always are. And that's what we need to do as board members, is constantly challenge ourselves to make sure, did we look under every stone, right? Every stone that makes sense. Now, I'm all about balance, objectivity, with fiscal responsibility. Did I think that they did that this year? I think they did a phenomenal job, quite frankly. I'll go out on a limb. Given the situation with regard to the economy, the recession in the economy, '08 into '09, we're slowly creeping out of that. Given the current economic situation, both nationally, locally, statewide, et cetera, we had to do something. There are refs going on, reduction enforcers going on everywhere. Is it unfortunate? Do I like it on a personal level? No, my wife's probably losing her job. But objectively, for the taxpayers, in good conscience, I had to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. And April, your second question, and let's start with Glenn.
Okay, um, let's see. Has the school district currently continues to show a steady decrease in enrollments, how can the district best address the changing demographics of the schools?
I think we're going to have to talk a lot about exactly what's going on. You know, we built additions in the past for increased capacity, and now we're looking at lower. Like I said, the article I read yesterday, Pinkerton's dealing with the same thing. You know, they said, you know, "We can't continue to provide the same services cost-effectively." There's going to be things that need to be cut or changes made. It's unavoidable. If nothing in the community changes and the population continues to decline, I lived in Drakehead for a couple of years. A lot of those schools down there were all converted over to government buildings because they didn't need it. They had no kids coming into town. Shortly after I left, they built, I believe it was a new middle school, a new elementary school. They had a massive building boom because people moved in. Woodmont on the horizon might change things. It might balance things out. It hopefully brings in, you know, tax-positive. But it needs to be discussed, and it needs to be discussed soon as far as what's going on, because we are seeing it. And it's been a few years, and we're down quite a few children.
Thank you, Glenn. John?
I think that we need to continue doing what we're currently doing. I think that as has been said, we have a contract as a school district with the voters of the district that as our needs increase, we go to them and express the increased needs and ask for additional support. And as our needs decrease, we turn back the capabilities that we don't need. Yes, our enrollment has gone down, and that has allowed us over the past years to reduce multiple teachers at the elementary level, multiple classrooms in the elementary level. That's why some of our schools aren't overcrowded anymore, because some of the classrooms that are no longer used as primary instruction space can now be used for art or music instead of having that in the hall. We've lost half a team in the middle school. It's likely that in a year or two, there will be more cuts in the middle school as the bubble of decreasing enrollment moves up. And ultimately, that will probably hit the high school, and you'll probably see declines in high school faculty as well. At the same time, we're also consolidating positions and eliminating positions and redistributing responsibilities. As you know, a number of the counselor positions in the schools are gone. We have an award-winning, one of the best library systems in the state, and we've cut the director position. We have a number of places where we're looking to reshuffle the staff that we have and the opportunities that we have to get the most that we can out of the excellent people that we have. And we're doing everything we can to accommodate the needs of the students with the lea- the needs of the students with the least possible headcount and expense, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, John. Todd?
Yeah, thank you. So with regard to reductions in enrollment, and how can the school district address that going forward, quite frankly, just have the objectivity to look at everything, whether that's staff, overhead, its number of facilities. If consolidations were to become necessary, so be it. We have to objectively look at that. But if we do that, we have to look at both the short term and the long term. And by long term, I mean, if there's any trend data or indicators, as the economic conditions tend to trend upward, you have people with the ability to sell their four-bedroom homes in town that their children have since graduated and moved on. If the economy turns around, and you have an influx of younger families moved into town, we need to take a look at, what's the correlation between those economic trends from a GDP standpoint to the local level and the correlation with student enrollment? And need to balance all that. So let's not do something in the short term if it's going to potentially cost us, and the indications are that it's going to cost us a lot more in the long term. So a balanced approach, objective look at everything, consolidations if necessary, but look in the short and long term and balance that. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Nancy?
I agree. I think certainly, as we see enrollment declining, I believe everything must be reviewed, because certainly, a declining enrollment will have an impact certainly on how we staff all of our facilities. I agree. I think that we have to look under every, as Todd says, look under every stone. If there are opportunities to consolidate positions, then we have to consolidate positions. I certainly would expect that the board and the superintendent would do that in a manner that would be appropriate in terms of protecting the integrity of the services delivered in the classroom. Woodmont may bring some new opportunities, but that's years forward. We, I believe that we have to take a look at this now. We're down one-hundred-and-eighty-one students. As I said, we're expected to lose some next year. The economy is starting to come out of its funk, but we still have people that are moving out of our district, and all of that has to be reviewed. We have to look at ways to save money. We have to look at ways to consolidate positions. We may even look at ways of consolidating spaces in our buildings.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to fill in for Chris. He had to step out. So let's just ask a question. As sort of the overseers or the purveyors of high-level school district policy, per se, I had a question about what new ideas do you folks think you can bring to the table, and how would you take those new ideas and do more with less? We'll start with you, John.
One of the big focuses that we've had lately is technology in classrooms, and for that matter, out of classrooms. My wife teaches at the high school. You had a video conference scheduled with somebody not too long ago. The idea being that you can reach out to other districts, other areas, to share expertise and bring in value that we may not have in our own district, without having to grow it on our own. Another thing that has been in the news lately is the idea of blizzard bags, of materials that students can be working on in the event of snow days. The whole idea of the prevalence of technology, the increasing value of it, the ability to get more instructional material in online, read unpublished, less expensive forms, less overhead, less cost, the ability to cooperate with other sources of information, other sources of expertise and talent, and work together collaboratively across town and district and state lines, rather than just in our own little environment with the walls around it at the border, are all ways that business and education are looking at increasing the efficiency of education, increasing the value of education, and holding down the cost of education. Those are the areas that I'm primarily concerned with right now.
Thanks, John. Todd?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I have any new ideas at this point in time sprung out. I'd have to give it a lot of thought. But generally speaking, what I would do is make sure that any approach that we have with our students, we approach it in a manner that is conducive towards preparing our children to be competitive globally. So if curriculum needs to change, then so be it. If we need to address new technologies, which we always do, so be it. But let's make sure that whatever we do, it just doesn't always add to the bottom line of what we pay in our tax bill. So that balanced approach, I'll reiterate that message. But new ideas, just be open-minded and be able to look under every stone, under every opportunity. Perhaps look at the requirements for whatever that might be in terms of special education, or student curriculum, or, you know, new ways of approaching how we fund other elements and things of that nature. Be open to any avenue to at least vet it out.
Thanks, Todd. Nancy?
Sure. Well, I love the idea of technology in the classroom, virtual classrooms. And I think if there might be a way to partner with some of our local universities and colleges, that would be a fabulous way to get some new technology in our classroom. I don't know the ins and outs of that, or if technically we can do that. However, there are so many, right up the road in Manchester, we have Southern New Hampshire University, Saint Anselms, the University of New Hampshire. There may be some ways to partner up with some of these local educational facilities to bring some technology into our classrooms that wouldn't have a high cost to it. I loved the idea about the blizzard bags. Someone was quoted in the newspaper saying, it may be too late this year to talk about that, to have any impact. Of course, you know, we could have snow until April. But I think that's something worth exploring, to help us, you know, save some money later in the year. So we do have to always, always, always be on the cutting edge of the next great idea that will offer an educational opportunity for our students, and certainly not cost our district a lot of money.
Thank you, Nancy. Glenn, excuse me.
As John said, well, actually, I'm not an educator. I don't have a degree, a teaching degree. I'm probably not the person you want teaching your kids. However, as it's been said numerous times, we do have a staff that looks at what is out there, what needs to come out. I know what happens in my company is, when we start a project, we bring in, or at least I try to bring in, guys that work on the manufacturing floor, salespeople, everyone, because those people ask different questions. I think what the school board needs to do is, when something is presented, say, why are we doing this? Do we really need it? Technology is a great thing. I have seen, and I've read, in a lot of cases, in the technical magazines, technology's not always a good thing, because kids rely so much on technology that they don't understand it. And some of the people I've worked with that come from other places, they get by with less, but they understand how you need to answer the question. They might not know what the answer is, but they know where to go and where to get it. And we're going to have to look at what we need, what we don't need, and ask questions. Any of us can ask a question, why, and Nate, I'm sure, will give us a reason why. And hopefully, we have people out there that come up and say, why are we doing this? Or maybe we should do something else. Everyone participates and throws something in the mix.
Okay, thank you. And Mel, your second question, and let's start with Todd.
If you were to be elected, you'd be on the board of, in the private sector, would be a sixty-million-dollar-a-year corporation. Why do you think you're qualified for this position?
Well, actually, in my career, I've actually managed programs that range anywhere from fifty million to over, well over, three-hundred million on an international basis, ranging everywhere from Altovin, Austria, to Singapore, and from Toronto to Guadalajara, and virtually everywhere in between. So I know how to manage large, huge programs, manufacturing programs, highly complex programs. I have an MBA, like I said. From a financial point, one of my undergraduate degrees is a Bachelor of Science in Finance and Economics. I've been a budget committee member and civil servant to this community for the past two years. I believe I bring a lot to the table. I'm not afraid to ask questions, vet the discussion. I may agree or disagree with a certain area, but I want to have the public conversation, to vet it out, to make sure that if a decision's to be made, everybody has had a chance to hear the discussion, hear the arguments, pro and con, and make a decision that's informed. I bring, I believe I bring that to the table. I believe my beliefs, that in terms of what's important to balance, both the taxpayers, the students, and state mandates are critical. And making sure that you do that in the most objective and fiscally responsible manner possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Nancy?
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, I'm experienced. I sat on a school board in the Jaffrey Ringe area for four years, and chaired it for one. I've sat on numerous committees and negotiated numerous support staff contracts, teachers' contracts, and certainly, I've put together, or been part of putting together, budgets. I had the dubious honor, in the very first year of ever reaching a twenty-million-dollar budget in the Jaffrey Ringe area, of explaining to the taxpayers how we got to a twenty-million-dollar budget, which I know doesn't probably sound like much in this district, but in very small Jaffrey Ringe, that was a big deal. And we took a lot of heat for that, but it passed. So I've been through this process before. I'm familiar with the procedures in terms of how to navigate through the system. I've obviously never sat on this board, but I certainly bring the expertise and the knowledge of how the system works. I was a stay-at-home mom for eight years, and we managed on one income. And then we had, as I said earlier, my husband lost his job. We managed on very little income. So believe me when I tell you, I am frugal Mary. And if we don't have to spend money, I'm not into spending money. So in terms of putting together the budget here in this district, you can be certain that I will be very, very thoroughly questioning whether a particular item is necessary for our district.
Thank you, Nancy. Glenn?
As far as, I guess, qualified to manage, I look at it a little bit different. The school board is similar to the board of directors. Board of directors at my company has a lot of different people from a lot of different places, and they have a lot of different ideas. They come and they ask the CEO, this is what we want. We want to buy such-and-such date, new product, whatever. Then the CEO talks to all his people and says, what can we do? And he goes back and presents it to the board. The board says yes or no. I think it's similar. Like I said, I'm not, you know, I'm a mechanical designer. I melt silicon at, you know, several thousand degrees to make solar cells. I'm not, you know, a corporate executive. I don't want to be. I don't want to be a politician. I'm kind of a, what you see is what you get. Pair of jeans and a shirt, get in there. I don't believe in the, it's not my job mentality. You get in there, you help where you help. But, you know, Nate brings stuff forward, and then we need to look at it and ask questions. One of the things I think we do need to change is, on the school board, we've had some people on there that have been on there for a long time. And sometimes, when you do something so long, you don't understand what it's like when you're out there. You sit up here, you talk about stuff, and sometimes, there's people in the room, they're completely confused. Like I said, I've been attending meetings in town since we decided to stay here in two thousand and one. I've been to, I don't know how many, school board, town council, conservation, every meeting in town, I think, with the exception of ZBA, just because I'm interested. We need new ideas and new people that maybe aren't professional anything, as far as on the school side, but can look at something and just say, why are we doing that? And is there a different way to do it? And I think that's what the board of directors in companies are supposed to do. Look at it and say, and then say, yes, we want to do that, no, we don't.
Thank you, Glenn. And John?
The question was, what do I think qualifies me to be a member of the school board? For kids? There's a concept in management, management concepts come and go, so I don't know if this one is fashionable anymore, but it's called a stakeholder theory. You look at everybody who has an interest in the organization that you're managing. And in the school district, it breaks down to students, parents and voters, and I group them together loosely, and employees. And as a parent, I think that the most important qualification to be a member of the school board is involvement and understanding what your kids are doing in the school, and how your kids are doing in the school. I've had one of my kids who started in the inclusion program the year before, or was it two years before, at LEAP? And she's in the sixth grade now. I have a daughter who's a freshman, who was in the first-year program, the first class at Moose Hill School, Matthew Thornton, yeah. At Moose Hill School, I have two sons who have graduated from the high school already. In addition to that, we've been mentioning our educational background. So, okay, I have a master's in management, I have a master's in mass communications, I have a bachelor's in psychology, including learning theory. I've been a college-level teacher at Franklin Pierce University, teaching mass communication courses. I've been a volunteer in the school district for, I guess, around ten years, ever since we started with the idea of building a radio station, which has now become the backbone of a class and a club in the high school. And my wife and I spent last night making sure that a couple of freshmen could do play-by-play on the basketball game on the high school radio station. I've been on the board for three years. I've been working for a really discouraging amount of years. So I have a certain amount of experience in how businesses operate, and I'm pretty completely invested in the school district. So I'd say that's why I'd like to continue for my second term.
Thank you, John. What I'd like to do is see if there's anyone in the audience now that might have a question. So you can all fight about it, rock, paper, scissors. All two of you.
According to the State School Board Association, the school board member's job is to represent the school. Do you believe that, or do you believe you represent the taxpayers? Because personally, myself and many people I talk to, don't always feel that the school board is representing the taxpayer when it comes to financial decisions in this town.
Nancy, could we start with you on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I actually think that the school board represents both the interest of the district and certainly the interest of the taxpayer. The school district is the governing entity for the schools, and we're spending taxpayers' money. So why wouldn't we be responsible to the taxpayers? So it's a balance. You have to balance what's right for students, and you have to balance that up against what's right for taxpayers. So I believe that we represent both.
Thank you. Glenn?
I'm going to have to say, obviously, both. I think you can't just represent the school. And I don't know what the School Board of Education website actually says, but, you know, it's the people in town that elected us, or elected some of us, might elect some of us, to be here. You have to represent the town. Obviously, you have to protect the school district to some degree, and there has to be a balance. And with decreasing enrollment, the balance is going to get more and more difficult. You can't have a school with, you know, fifty classrooms with a hundred people in it. I don't think we're going to get that far. But, you know, it is, it's up and down, and you need to look at the ups and downs. And you also have to consider the people out there that are having some downs. There's a lot of people that have lost jobs. New Hampshire's been really, really lucky, a lot luckier than a lot of other parts in the country. But they say it's coming back. I certainly hope it does, because it's been a tough, tough go for a lot of people.
Thank you. And John?
Well, I'm not familiar with the mission statement of, was that the state board of education?
I think it's the school.
School Board Association. Well, I don't pay too much attention to things like that. I think the answer comes back to what I said a little while ago about stakeholders. And there are multiple categories of stakeholders. I think students, employees, and taxpayers, and parents. I think my first responsibility, or at least the way I see it, is my first responsibility is to the kids. Then I'd say that parents and taxpayers, but you have to kind of differentiate there, because it's not a homogeneous group. A lot of people who are parents are also taxpayers, but not every taxpayer is a parent of a student in the school. So their interests might necessarily, or might be different based on whether they're invested with a kid in the school or not. So what I try to do is first focus on making sure that the kids are getting what they need to get the opportunities that we, as a community, have said we want to give them. And then I try to hold the prices and hold the line on costs for everybody as best that we can. So that's how I divide the responsibilities.
Thank you. And Todd?
Yes, quite succinctly and to the salient point. I believe that we represent the taxpayers and the voters who got us here for the school district, who ultimately is for the student. Those are the key points. So in that order. I think the taxpayers got us here, the voters got us here, the taxpayers. You have a balanced approach necessary to balance all of the above. We represent the school district on behalf of the taxpayers and voters who got us here. And what's it all about? It's all about that fiscal responsibility to make sure that education of the students is optimized to the best we possibly can.
Thank you. Now, we had another, second question. We actually have two questions that we can take here, and let's start with you then. And let's start with you then, Mike, okay?
It's somewhat of a philosophical question, so I'm going to respectfully ask the answer to be as concise as possible, and that's tough with a philosophical question. But it's a follow-up to some of the comments made earlier about how our children need to be prepared to compete in the global economy. For those of us who are fortunate to still be employed in high tech, the global economy is very, very, very real. It's every day. My place of employment is similar to the UN in a good way. And the coworkers I have from other countries to a person, okay, are all highly, highly educated individuals. They come from educational systems that...
Have a significantly longer school day and a significantly longer school year. In addition, they're highly focused in terms of science and math, in terms of rigor. They also happen to speak English quite well, so that comes to that other point about language. Given that our system still mirrors what I consider to be an agrarian calendar, 200 years old at this point, with about 180 days total, okay? I'd like to know whether you think our kids can really compete in this economy if we continue with that model. So I don't know if that's a yes or no. The second question, the more important one for me, and my kids don't like me asking this, by the way, okay? Is would you be willing to make some incremental changes at the local level, within your control, to increase the school day or school year? For example, by eliminating one of the two-long breaks?
Glenn, let's start with you on that.
Oh, of course, I get that one. The first one was a yes or no.
Well, this won't be popular with some kids, or maybe some other folks, but I've been telling my kids for years, like I said, because of the places I've worked and the things I've seen similar to Mike, the value on the core education, and not just the core education, but the value of education. I was listening to a talk show the other day, and they said, you know, there's a lot of kids that go to college now. They come out with these Ivy League degrees, and it doesn't mean anything, because daddy built a library, and everyone's afraid of questioning this kid. Unfortunately, I don't believe the country has, is keeping up in the priorities of other people in other places. And when you do work with Chinese, Taiwanese, Indians, lots of different Asians, you see the differences. It's, you know, I've told my kids for years, I really think you should be going to school more, more days, longer days, because the only thing that's going to do is benefit you when you get out. And I don't think a lot of kids see that now, because it's just, well, I want to get out of school. And I was the same way, I want to go to school longer. But when you see what you're competing against, and we're starting to see that now, the jobs you used to be able to get, you don't walk into a company, stay there for 50 years and get the gold watch. You know, you find yourself at age 50 getting replaced by someone who's 22, because they're cheaper. So I guess to answer the philosophical question, I don't know if you could do it, and it won't be popular, but I think sooner or later, the country as a whole is going to have to look at competing with other countries. And education is the key. I mean, that's it. So we do have to compete. Can we do it? I don't know, but kids shouldn't listen to this right now.
Thank you Glenn. John?
Can kids compete with the current model? At this precise moment in time, I'd say we're hanging on by our fingernails. So can we do it if the world stopped changing today? Possibly. Can we do it moving forward in a competitive world where people are trying to outdo the United States and each other? Probably not. We will need to make some changes. I liked your question about eliminating one of the breaks. I found out at a school board meeting earlier this week that, do you know where the February break came from? That came in with Jimmy Carter and wanting to move the school year out so that you could have less heating costs and electricity costs and things like that. I'm not sure we need a February break, but I'm not sure that Londonderry can unilaterally make it go away, because we are in a cooperative basis. If we make our February break go away, then what happens to the kids who are going to Alvern or MST for technology programs or other things like that? Can we increase the school day or the school year? Well, it would be nice, but again, where are we going to get the money to do it? We've spent some time today talking about areas we can cut and the unfortunate need to reduce classroom size or reduce classroom teachers and classroom aides. I think clearly, everybody who's looked at the education system would like to see a way to do it. And I think Londonderry would be a really good example to be on the forefront of it, but I think it's also going to take support at a state and a national basis. We can't go to the taxpayers and say, give us 10% more money so we can have 10% more school days. Or something like that, because the money just isn't there. If there is a statewide or a national commitment to finding the funds and redistributing the money that we're currently spending in an investment in the future, then there are a lot of wonderful ways and wonderful opportunities to do it. And I would strongly support any candidate for state or federal office who's going to stand up and say that.
Thanks, John. Todd?
Thank you. To your first question, can we compete? I can tell you personally, we are competing. And we are competing very well internationally, from a standpoint of effectiveness, productivity, efficiency, things of that nature. However, let me caveat that. The curve is rapidly changing. We have up-and-coming economies in the world that, quite frankly, are going to, excuse the expression, eat our shorts if we're not careful. So am I willing to increase the school year philosophically? Yes. If we can figure out a way to fund it, I'd be willing to increase the school year. But I would not be in favor of making the entire summer vacation go away. Let me, I'll go right out on a limb there and say, I would not be in favor of that. Some of it, perhaps. One of the school vacations? Philosophically, I've been in that camp for a long time. I'd be more than willing, do we need two vacations? Whether it's the April or the February? I'm not so sure we need both. Would it benefit the students in the long term? You bet. Make us more competitive? Absolutely. Get some more learning by lengthening the school day? I'd be willing to do that as well. Again, if we can figure out a way to fund it. We're caught between a rock and a hard place. We want to be competitive. Finances are tight. We're having more and more pressure at the local level to fund everything. And I don't see that trend changing anytime in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, Todd. Nancy?
Sure. Well, I think that we are competing now. I agree, the agrarian model, I think, has become outdated and is no longer necessary to the way we function in this society. I would love to see the school year lengthened a little bit. I have a, you know, a 10-year-old. And, you know, I can tell you that when they finish up in June and they go back in September, there's been a little bit of a loss in what they've learned at the end of the year. So our teachers have to spend some time sort of doing some remedial work with these kids when they come back after being off for 11 or 12 weeks. So I would be in favor of discussing lengthening the school year. Of course, the issue is always funding. I believe we're already losing a little bit of our edge on the world stage, truthfully. We used to be the leader, the leader educationally around the world. We're not anymore. I read an article now that puts us like at 25 or 27 in terms of educational advancement in our country. I find that shocking. And we are working more and more with countries around the world. And we are finding ourselves now in positions where we don't understand their languages, we don't understand their economies. You know, we're a little bit behind in terms of interpreting their own languages. So I think that absolutely, to keep up with the way the world is changing, I think that this world has to change. That's my perspective. I also, truthfully, would like to see maybe one of the vacations go. We would absolutely have to work with our partners in the area to figure that out. But we have a week off at Christmas, we have a week off in February, we have a week off in April, and then they're off for the summer. I really believe that you lose a lot in terms of continuity when we have all of that time off. And you're right, this will be very unpopular with kids. We want kids to go to school longer. That, you know, it's a good thing they're not voting for us.
Well, you folks have been popular today, and the audience really wants to interact, but unfortunately, we're running a little short on time. But you have one more question to go for you folks. And this will be our 30-second answer. How's that? And we'll start this one off with John.
Joe, if you don't mind, on the third round, Todd hasn't had an opportunity to lead off. So if you'd like to take it, you're welcome to.
That's in the spirit of... Todd, just say yes, because that'll cut the time down. Yes, Todd, okay. Todd's first. Jim?
First of all, thank you for running. My name is Jim Finch, and I live at 69 Fieldstone Drive in Mountain Home Estates. And my question is certainly non-academic compared to many of the queries that you've had so far. Londonderry and many, many of the towns throughout New Hampshire are facing today granting sizable increases to their union employees. And of course, in the school department, our workforce is about 99% represented by some union. And so granting three-year contracts means you're taking a guess at what's the economy going to be like in three years. So I would like to know your feelings about the union contracts and their length. And what, if you think three years is good, I would like to hear that. If you think we should take another look at something shorter, I would like to know that also. Thank you very much.
Gee, Todd, that's a great one for him to let you lead off with.
That's perfectly fine. Excellent question. I'm in favor of maintaining a three-year contract. The reason being is, if you don't, say you did a one-year. That means every year you're renegotiating, right? If you do a one-year with automatic renewal, if you don't go back to the table, I'm not so sure I'd be in favor of that. What I would be in favor of is perhaps rolling my sleeves up and getting a little aggressive at the negotiation table to say, hey, let's look at the economic projections. Let's look at where we are today. Let's base it on the facts, and let's move forward and look for those concessions that perhaps maybe we haven't gotten. For example, one item I'll throw right in the table that I'd like to see. I'd like to see, like in the private sector, the actual individual maybe take on a little bit more of their payment responsibilities for insurance increases. So, for example, in the private sector, there's many companies that the individual has to pick up 40, 50% of the cost of their medical insurance. I'm not saying that we have to go to that extent, but certainly taking on, if the increases come along, I don't believe that the taxpayers should have to pick up every element of that increase. I think it should be shared. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Nancy?
It's a great question. Having sat on a school board where I negotiated contracts with unions, I can tell you, I can't possibly imagine sitting down and negotiating a contract every year with the union. Again, it is a painstaking process. And if you certainly run into situations where you have a standoff, then the process becomes even longer. So I would certainly support continuing three-year contracts with our unions. But I believe that we have to look at trends in terms of looking at absorbing, or not absorbing, but negating any costs that we could talk about. I think that as you move forward in a negotiation, there's a lot of give and take between the district and the union. And I believe that you have to have conversations about costs in terms of health insurance, any other costs that we can look at in terms of trending up or trending down. Put them on the table, negotiate them, and move on.
Thank you Nancy. Glenn?
I guess I would be in favor of the three-year contract for the reason stated, because if you're going to negotiate something every single year, you're going to spend a lot of time talking about what it is you want. I can see putting in some, I guess, escape valves, for lack of a better term, that some things, and healthcare is a big thing, have some skyrocketing costs. Maybe we need to look at specifics that the contract stays in place except for healthcare, or if there's a maximum percentage that goes up. Because the healthcare and the union contracts in retirement has been, for years, talked about. That's really what's starting to catch up to all the states, is how do we pay for the things that years and years and years ago we all thought was a good idea? And now it's time to pay, and people are living longer and longer and longer. And there's a lot of costs there that I don't think people really understood back then. But as far as negotiating every single year, I don't think that would work. Maybe too...
Sorry, go ahead. Maybe too?
Maybe, but there's a lot. And I know, I haven't been in there, but I hear and I read and I see what goes on. And there's a lot that, you know, to hammer out. And if you're always hammering out what you want for what you provide, you're not providing the education, you know?
Thanks Glenn. John?
As a candidate for a board that has three-year terms, I can tell you, three-year contracts are a good thing, because that way you only have to deal with them once. I don't think that there's a problem with a three-year term of a union contract. I think that if you look at the contracts that we have in place now, the teachers have given a significant give-back in benefits that they are entitled to in order to help us defray or manage the costs. I think that came in at somewhere around $125,000 this year. We negotiated a contract with the custodians, and I have to interrupt myself. Steve, this is public information, right? Yeah.
You don't know what it is, but it is.
Hey, I got to make sure, and, you know, when you have a question, you ask it. But they negotiated a contract with us that works on cost of living rate increases that work within a range based on the Boston ADI, is it? The formula that affects Boston. So their increases over the years will reflect what costs and prices and wages are doing in an overall market, not some prescriptive guess that we have. We are very aggressive in working with the contracts. Are there things that we could do? Will teachers probably have to pay a larger share of their healthcare in the future? I'd say that's on the table. The retirement thing, yeah, that's a great example. But you know what? That's also an example of the state shirking its responsibility and passing down costs to the town that they are supposed to be paying. But most importantly, I want to say that unions, I don't think, are a problem in our district. Unions are a good thing. Unions are a mechanism that lets us work with the teachers as a group. The teachers and the custodians and the allied health professionals and the support workers are very cooperative, very motivated, and very dedicated people. And to the degree that the union helps us work out a fairer and mutually beneficial relationship between management and employees, I'd say it's a good thing, and I support it.
All right. Well, I would like to thank you folks for stepping forward here. Yes, sir.
I just have a very brief question.
A brief one?
Brief question.
Get up here then.
And a yes or no answer.
There we go, yes or no, that's three seconds.
Don Mascol, it's 7 Tokonell Drive, Londonderry. You've been looking at the class side of things, which is very commendable. But what about the revenue side? Why not look at the possibility of bringing in students from other communities and charging tuition? If our enrollment is decreasing, which it is, and it will continue to decrease, what about the possibility of trying to bring in 100, 200, 300, maybe up to 500 students from other communities that might have overcrowded schools, and charge them tuition, so you can beef up the revenue side? And I guess there's a lot of questions concerning this aspect, but a yes or no would be appreciated if you'd be willing to evaluate this concept.
Joe, can I take a swing?
Go ahead, John.
You'd have to find a rate of tuition that would be profitable. And you'd have to find willing buyers who would pay you that rate of tuition. And then even when you do that, you'd have to build into it the costs of retirement going forward. If you have Londonderry teachers teaching kids from Hudson based on tuition... If, if you have Londonderry teachers teaching kids from Hudson based on tuition coming in, then we still are going to have to pay our share of the Londonderry teachers' retirement and other costs like that going forward. In some areas, in some narrow areas...